To the Select Board meeting for June 26. Any announcements? Select person Green, myself, and Town Administrator Klechner went to the grand opening of the AC Hotel in Cleveland Circle. So it's quite a, quite a nice place that they've developed. And certainly an improvement over what was there, though I do miss the theater.
It's nice that they call themselves the Circle Apartments as almost a tribute.
Yeah. So the apartments are one building and then the hotel is the next building. So this was, this was the hotel. And we had a very nice lunch.
And tour.
And a tour, yeah. Very nice place. And we've had two park grand openings.
Okay, can I mention something about the AC Hotel? AC stands for Antonio Catalan. And it's a European-style hotel. So it's kind of unique in this area. And one of the things that the sales director mentioned was that Boston has a real shortage of hotel rooms. And if you think about where Brookline is located, we can fill that shortage.
Yep.
So we should think about that as something that's really going for us, so.
Right. It's an opportunity to help us alleviate the tax burden on residents, especially as we go ahead with some school projects. So the more that we can bring in through non-residential tax revenue, the better. So I think, and I heard today that the River Road Hotel is going to be breaking ground within the next few weeks, so that's going to be exciting.
Mid-July is going to be the groundbreaking.
A few weeks. I was trying to be fuzzy. So then we've had two park openings. One of them is going on right now as we speak, over at Emerson Garden, right down the street from here. So if anyone in our vast TV audience is watching and really wants to really experience a really neat park while stuff is going on and get some free ice cream.
Let me add, the park is an accessible park, meaning that it's accessible to people in wheelchairs and in other ways. And one of the things that, nice things that happened at the reopening was the dedication of a tree to Mary Lise, a, that really nice, what kind of tree is it?
Katsura.
Katsura tree, which is a Japanese tree that provides foliage cover throughout the year and really fits in well with Mary Lise's life and how we remember her. And let me just add, the Brookline Avenue Park that was dedicated on Saturday is a not only accessible but inclusive playground, meaning that not only can kids in wheelchairs get onto the rides, but they're set up in such a way that their friends can be on the rides with them, so it's an inclusive opportunity for children with disabilities.
Anything else?
We should remind our vast TV audience that this is the last meeting before we go on our summer schedule.
Right.
So meetings on the 10th of July, the 24th of July, August the 7th, and August 21st.
Who's that? Oh.
He's just that good.
Right. Okay, Mr. Pinches, you're up for public comment. You have five minutes.
I see we have a timer here, very good. The topic is Babcock Street.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Fred Pinches, F-R-E-D-P-I-N-C-H-E-S. The topic is Babcock Street, just when you thought the controversy is ending, one more question. It's not a question of what they're trying to do, it's the way they're trying to do it. And I think this is an opportunity for us to possibly use a different construction method over there which could save the town substantial time and money. I have talked to the engineer on the project, for Babcock Street project, and very bluntly, he doesn't want to hear it. In fairness to Mr. Ditto, who we teardonded, I have not talked to him, so this is not a criticism of him. But again, it's a concrete highway, basically, and what they are planning on doing, from what I know about the plans, and I am not going to pay $50 non-refundable fee just to look at plans, which should be public record to begin with, but they're going to remove the old street, which they have to do, of course, then pay for new material to come in for the base, and then put the surface on. It all sounds good. My recommendation is down there, use the existing concrete, crush that in place, recycle it as the base, and then all they have to do is to put the new surface on. Again, theoretically, with the equipment that I'm familiar with, they could crush the whole thing down there possibly in three days. The whole job could theoretically be done in two weeks, you know, plus or minus some preliminary work. Minimize the disruption on a very busy street. I mean, you've heard all the problems about traffic and everything else from all the earlier debate, and I think this would be an opportunity to do something down there which would not only benefit to the town, but also could be a demonstration project for the Commonwealth. I first talked to Mas Harvey about 10 years ago about this. The equipment that I'm familiar with down there at the time has not been used in New England. It's mostly used out West, but I mean, this is a way to do it, and the Babcock Street project with concrete on the surface down there is exactly the kind of situation where this equipment could save a lot of time and money. So why pay to remove the concrete, ship the whole stuff out, pay for new material, when we could use what we've got, crush it in place, and you've got it. I mean, will I talk about recycling? Well, this is a way we can do some recycling. So again, the bid opening is next Monday, so if anyone's interested in more detail, I'm not going to be able to do it in five minutes, but I can go through a little more detail of what's involved and how I think we could do it. And again, I think if we have to postpone the bid opening, or even the contract itself, any loss of time now, I think we could easily make up later in a more efficient way of building the new road, which we obviously need. Again, it's not what they're trying to do, it's the way they're trying to do it. Spending money is not a problem. I don't want to say that, but I mean, it's a question of wasting money. And when we're not doing something as efficiently as we reasonably can, and basically getting good value that we can reasonably get, then we're wasting money. And again, we're talking about public funds here, so there's a public trust, and it's just too bad that somebody is a little more interested in what I've got to say, so they can look at it objectively and make a decision for themselves. So that would be basically my comment at the time. And again, the bid opening is next Monday, so, I mean, it's going to happen, it's going to have to happen pretty quickly, because once they award the contract and they begin doing it, you know, what do we do then? Not much. So I want to thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
And see what we can do. Thank you.
So Mr. Ditto, you heard that, so something to consider? And of course, of course, this is completely reimbursable, so the state is paying for this, right?
This is Jeff and I.
Right, so this isn't town funds.
I'll take it up with Mr. Ditto and Mr. Peppa surgeon.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's dive into the calendar. We have some minutes for some joint meetings with the school committee and the advisory committee, subcommittee. So the first is June 6, which is the public hearing. I had just one little thing. Someone is attributed as a town meeting member for precinct 17. I don't think there, there isn't a precinct 17. We only have 16 precincts, so that's obviously incorrect. But, and then we also have the minutes for June 13. Does anyone have any adjustments? So what I would, what I would like to do is move approval, subject to approvals by the school committee and ad hoc subcommittee, because since those bodies participated, they should have a shot in these minutes. So, so here's, so all those, so the motion is to approve with the, approve as amended with the condition of approval by the other bodies. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next up is a leaf disposal contract with La Russa Corporation. $177,000, that's a lot of leaves.
Probably take up C2.
And C also is La Russa Corporation roadway improvements for $899,000. Mr. Ditto.
So you ask, that's a lot of leaves. Well, it's a lot of leaves and a lot of other stuff, too. This contract consists of off-site disposal of leaf and yard waste, off-site disposal of tree stumps, gravel, cement concrete, tuminous concrete, catch basin material, street sweepings, and that is all of it. But you can imagine, that's where we take all the support material that we generate during construction throughout the town and bring it up there and process it. So this contract is a multi-year contract. It's, has two years of, two one-year extensions at this original contract price. The, we did only have one low bidder, who happens to be the contractor there right now, and it wasn't a surprise that he was the low bidder. He's, this is the type of contract you really have to get entrenched where you're at to make it work. He's been there for three years. He can, he knows the ins and outs, so we've had a very good relationship with him, and we strongly recommend his approval of awarding and executing the contract. This does expire June 30, so get the notice to proceed, should you vote it tonight, tomorrow.
And then the 800, the next one is roadway improvements?
Yes. So this scope of work entails milling and overlaying Shaw Road, Walnut Hill Road, Wallace Road, Walcott Road Extension, and Xanthus Road. And will be, like I say, milling and overlaying those streets and also installing granite curbing and hot mixed asphalt berm. Concrete sidewalks, wheelchair ramps, and driveways will also be done. And the final bit of work is placing lumen hydroseeding the treelons. La Russa is a large contractor, he can do a lot of things, so we did check out his references, however, we knew what we were asking and getting in for. He's an excellent contractor, and he hasn't been in town in a while on the roadway side of things, but we did get excellent references, so we feel comfortable awarding and executing this contract.
Okay. Any questions on either contract? I will therefore move that we award and execute the disposal of leaves and related work contract with La Russa Corporation in the amount of $177,450. I'll also move that we award and execute contract for roadway improvements in various locations with La Russa Corporation in the amount of $899,708.20. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is accepting a $7,000 grant from West Suburban Community Health Network for school substance abuse and violence protection, prevention for youth. Mr. Jet.
Good evening, good evening. That's just a very simple grant. We're actually going to develop some videos with kids in school to talk about substance abuse, especially with our upcoming marijuana.
Okay.
Pretty simple.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
On this kind of project, does the host agreement money cover this kind of thing in the future?
It possibly could in the future, yes. It'd be part of the education process.
Right. Just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. At what age, like what's the youngest that you start to have these types of conversations with children?
When they walk in, no. Usually start having them in elementary school.
And, I mean, do you, do they really understand, like, what you're talking about?
Of course.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah.
I don't know whether to be impressed or saddened.
Both.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I will move that we accept the grant in the amount of $7,000 from West Suburban Community Health Network for the School Substance Abuse and Violence Prevention Program for Youth. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jet. And we have a renewal of a ice cream mobile food vendor. Any questions? The applicant isn't here, but I don't think, it's pretty straightforward.
I'll note that, that everybody has signed off on this. See no reason to, to not issue the renewal. There was a condition placed by the Transportation Department, which I believe is standard for, for all these types of licenses.
Right. And the streets he can sell on are specified in the, in the conditions. I don't know, the, kind of a, an ice cream truck is kind of one of the joys of summer living in the city, as we do, if you ask me. So I will move that we approve the renewal of Zach's Ice Cream, Ahmed Akhop Hatad B, owner, for a mobile food vendor license Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM throughout the town. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And I assume that was with the conditions that are in.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Next item is assistant manager, approving assistant managers at Brookline Dining Group, LLC Doing Business, Hamilton at, oh, alternate manager, I'm sorry. Two alternate managers, 1366 Beacon Street, and this is Angela Bonacorsi and Richard Melville. We typically don't have alternate managers appear before us. The licensee did, in fact, appear before us back in February, I think. And this is a new business, and I hear it's getting good reviews. So it's, it's cool. This is, this is Hamilton at the corner of Center and Beacon Street, 1366 Beacon. And the application appears to be in order. Police doesn't, hasn't found any reason to deny it. Any questions? I'll therefore move that we approve the application of Brookline Dining Group, LLC Doing Business, Hamilton's at 1366 Beacon Street for two alternate managers, Angela Bonacorsi and Richard Melville. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have a couple of transfers, internal transfers, so Mr. Faison?
Sure. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. The first item that you have in front of you is a transfer within the Veterans Department. It's $1,000 from Veterans Benefits to Office Supplies to make a couple of the last type of purchases that need to happen before the end of the fiscal year. And then if you're taking them in omnibus fashion.
Yeah, why don't you?
Sure. The next one is two transfers for the Police Department, again, trying to tie everything out for the end of the year. The first one is 90, so it's actually $92,100, not just $92,000, from permanent full-time to online transaction convenience fees. That deals with the ability for people to pay for parking tickets online and some of the passport enforcement, the pay myself type of thing. And then the other portion of that is a $3,000 transfer from permanent full-time to their diesel line, and that is due to the price being off a little bit when we initially projected the utility usage for this year back in late 2016. So that is all three transfers.
I'm assuming, though you correct me if this is incorrect, assumption that with the convenience fees, they are offsetting revenues, we're just not accounting for it this year?
Yes, that is correct.
They go into the general fund.
What we're dealing with is that we're having a lot more people pay online, so we're having convenience fees with that, that we are taking on a portion of, and then people also paying at the meters. And the meters are extraordinarily popular to pay at now, utilizing the Passport App, so.
So a fair percentage of this $92,000 is in fact captured as revenue somewhere else?
Yes, essentially, yeah.
On the balance sheet?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any questions from the board? So I'll move in omnibus fashion the following transfers. $1,000 from Veterans Benefits to Office Supplies, $92,100 from Patrol Permanent Full-Time to Traffic and Parking Online Transaction Convenience Fees, and $3,000 from Permanent Full-Time Patrol to Admin and Support for Diesel. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to our regular calendar. We have requests for some promotion authorizations. Deputy Chief Flaherty, welcome.
Keith Flaherty, Chief of Operations. We're requesting to fill three vacancies in the Fire Department through retirement, looking for one captain's position and two lieutenant's positions.
Okay. And these are civil service, so you, they, you go through a list, and you interview the folks on the list.
Correct, yes.
And make a selection off the list.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
So, just so I understand, the move of Lieutenant Hopkins to the captaincy is not going through civil service, it's just a promotion that he got?
No, all of our moves go through civil service. So when Captain Tehan retired, Lieutenant Hopkins is next on the captain's eligibility list, and we conducted an interview, we found him fit for that duty, and he's going to be promoted to captain. And then a lieutenant firefighter on the eligibility list for lieutenant will be promoted. And then another firefighter to fill a vacancy in the Training Division, which will start to be funded as of July 1.
Okay. So we know who's going to be the captain, it's not as if.
That's correct.
Okay.
There'll be no suspense. Any other questions? So I'll move that we authorize the filling of three vacancies in the Fire Department, a captain, and two lieutenants. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we're ready for you guys. Question of approving the application of Brookline Pizza Company Doing Business, Brothers Roast Beef and Pizza, Moskin Tadejan.
He's right.
Oh my God. President for a Common Vital License at 293 Cypress Street. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Well, my name is Benjamin Terry. I'm the attorney for Moskin Tadejan. She's the lady sitting in the middle row.
Okay.
And she's sitting there with her husband. So between the two of them, they have about 30 years of cooking experience, and so now they're, they're just taking over a new venture, which is, it's been there for about, I would say, 30 years at least.
Not that long.
Brothers Pizza.
I, I live next door to it, so.
So how long, would you say, 20?
Um, became a pizza place, early 80s? So, yeah. Okay.
Time does fly.
You're dating yourself.
You know, I said to somebody that I was down this road 40 years ago, and they looked at me, and it's really depressing, but I'm here.
It's not depressing anymore.
Well, if we're with the elderly, yes, but we're still young.
Oh, it is? Okay, okay.
So, so she's here because she wants to continue this, this tradition of selling roast beef and pizza and, you know, other types of stuff. So nothing really has changed. It's the same establishment, you know, the seating plan is the same. It's a team, we were going to ask for 24, but I think we'll do that later, you know, we'll apply for that later. So for the time being, we're just asking for a common fictional license.
Well, I hope your business supports 24, so.
It's a big place.
Yeah.
Pretty besides place.
Any questions from? Any questions from the board?
So this is a change of owner.
Ownership.
And we're also, request to change the hours as well.
Correct. To 11:00 p.m. Currently, they close around, not 30 or 10.
Yeah, if it's supposed to be.
The business may not support going to 11, but.
10, 30, and 10.
Oh, 10:30.
Yeah, so the current hours, at least that they're licensed to operate, are Monday through Saturday, 10:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And as I read the application, the proposed new hours are Sunday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00.
Should be.
I assume p.m. is what it is. So we're expanding on both ends of the day.
Not very much.
Not much. I happen to live across the street, maybe around the other corner, and I have no objection to the expansion of hours, so.
Yeah.
So will the neighbors complain?
Well, we would be the neighbors who complain. And I don't have any objection. I think, what I've found is maybe, you know, after a certain time, you know, the business just falls off, so.
Especially in Brookline.
Yeah, especially in that part, you know, it's a residential area, so there's not a lot of foot traffic at night, so. But, you know, maybe you can do delivery business, so, whatever.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? This isn't a public hearing, but if anyone wishes to speak, I see none. Up?
Here we are.
Come on up. So our vast TV audience can hear you, so I apologize for making you come up.
Would you like me to move over?
Yeah.
All right, Fred Pinches is here again. This is not my neighborhood, but a curiosity question, and I think Mr. Woszynski down there, resident expert, resident in more ways than one, could possibly, down there, mentioned the delivery business over there, and I was just wondering how this might affect if things do pick up, and I hope they are successful, with businesses like Grubhub, Foodler, now we got Food Dash, Uber Eats, the whole thing. I don't think we're probably going to have a traffic jam in the neighborhood over there, but I mean, there may be some questions about availability of parking for these services if they use them and that kind of thing, so. Just a question, observation, to see how we could run things in a system down there with any parking regulations, maybe a loading zone if it ever becomes that big or whatever, so.
Yeah, I think in this particular corner, it's one that I'm very familiar with, and so is select person Franco. You know, parking is not a terrible problem over there. There's ample street parking.
And the current, the current establishment has a robust delivery business, and they always seem to have no problem finding a parking space, so.
Okay, as I said, it was a curiosity question.
No, no.
Just an observation.
No, it's a good question, and just in, just in this particular location, it's just, it's not a, it's not a problem.
And they would probably have room for some expansion if they were able to get it.
Yeah, I hope, I hope they're successful.
Shouldn't be a problem.
And I hope, one level, I hope they create a parking problem for us. I hope you're that successful.
The only, the only parking-related statement I'll make is there seems to be a habit of patrons parking in the bus stop in front of the establishment, so that.
Yeah, the, part of the issue is, half the time, the sign is down.
Yep.
So that's, that's not the establishment's fault.
Oh, not, not at all. We're just talking about parking, so it opened the door.
Well, the $100 parking ticket for the bus stop, that's revenue for the town.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? So I will move that we approve the application of Brookline Pizza Company doing business as Brothers Roast Beef and Pizza, Moskan Tadeyan. Close enough. President for a Common Vital License at 293 Cypress Street. Proposed inside seating capacity is 18, and the hours of operation and license are Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Good luck. Okay, now we have an administrative item, and this is, every year, we have to reappoint all our department heads, so, Mr. Kluckner?
Yes, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's my privilege to recommend for your approval at this time of year, the annual reappointment of various department heads and senior management personnel that appear on the so-called department head schedule, also confidential department staff and miscellaneous positions that appear on Attachment A. in your packet. You would note that myself, the town administrator, the fire chief, and town council are in the midst of multi-year appointment terms, so our terms are not coming up this particular year. Also, would like to acknowledge that right now, we have an acting chief of police, an acting human resources director, and an acting recreation director that will be, remain to be filled temporarily, and of course, the board is not the appointing authority for the town clerk or the library director, but everybody else on that Attachment A. is recommended for a reappointment. At this time, I'm also recommending that the board approve a 2.0% general wage increase for employees in the non-union schedules. That includes department head schedule, the mid-management schedule, and as I mentioned, those other confidential employees and other miscellaneous employees. 2% for fiscal '19 is what we had budgeted for. We believe it's consistent with the marketplace. The only thing I would say about that is we are going to do a management study of our classification compensation, and that may raise some issues, and we'll deal with those, and certainly deal with those budget issues later on if they emerge, but at this point, recommending that 2.0% increase. We often will propose classification changes, but we're going to hold off on that until our study is done. The only thing I would mention, and I don't necessarily need your approval, but if you notice on Attachment B., we list all of the compensation, and we're making an adjustment for Deputy Chief Flaherty, who was here a bit ago, because of some equity issues and how, how union contracts and other issues evolved over the years and left, left his compensation needing to be adjusted. And then, finally, there are some changes in benefits for our non-union employees. This would include an updated longevity benefit, which is essentially catching up to many changes over the years. An updated clothing allowance for some employees who get an in lieu of boot allowance, it's mostly for the confidential clerk, it is only for the confidential clerical employees. An extension of the department head long-term disability program to personnel in the mid-management schedule, which is referred to as the T-Plan. I think you should know that employees in department head and mid-management schedules are not eligible for workers' compensation in this community. We never adopted that for, for those groups of employees, schoolteachers as well, I should mention, and.
Really?
But, so for our, for our group, we think a long-term disability plan, which is the group plan, would protect those group of employees. And then, finally, to ask for concessions or approve concessions that we've negotiated with most, if not all, our unions, which is to change our pay date from Thursday to Friday, and the frequency of pay from weekly to bi-weekly. So, Mr. Chair, I have proposed four separate votes on page 10-3, so I don't know if you want to read those, just refer to them on this page.
All right.
Those are the proposed votes.
Questions?
Yeah.
I assume your management study's going to be, is going to include a gender equity component?
Yeah, everything, you know, best practice for all the issues that are currently in play when you're looking at positions, for sure. We would hire a qualified consultant who does this for.
Can I also ask, what is a fence viewer?
Come on.
This is an important question. You have to come to the microphone.
Well, the similar, you know, what is the measure of wooden bark?
Well, we've already gone through that. We know that.
I get asked maybe once or twice a year to go out and survey private property, and they call under the, you know, idea that I'm the fence viewer, I'm going to survey that, but couldn't be further from the truth. What the fence viewer did back in the day was, you know, there were a lot of fences up here, holding herds or whatever in the right, where they want to be, and the fence gets knocked down or falls down, these animals get out and roam around where they shouldn't be, and the fence viewer gets called to find out where the problem is and get the solution implemented. So it's purely just going out and checking, making the fence, sure the fences in the town are the way they should be.
Actually, I think I asked you to go out and view a fence for a person who contacted me a couple of years ago, to, you know, to determine where the fence was in relation to.
Yeah.
You know, property lines.
I tell the people.
So now I understand.
Yeah, I can't do that for them, but what I do is I give them a list of land surveyors that work in the town, and if they want any information on their deed or any plans, you know, I can get that to them.
So have you had any instances of wayward goats?
Not yet.
Just wait for goat yoga.
I have wayward rabbits.
Yeah, so I should say that there's, there are a lot of these miscellaneous positions that are really here for traditional purposes, or because they are referenced in a state law or somewhere, but it's traditional.
Here's another one, the wearer of coal.
Yeah.
Big demand for that these days in these parts, this part of the country.
Well, under the current president.
Yeah, he loves coal. Okay, any other questions? So here we go. So I'll move that we approve the annual appointments of department heads and other personnel for fiscal year 2019, as recommended by the town administrator, and appearing as Attachment A. in our packet. We'll also move that we approve wage adjustments of 2% effective July 1, 2018, for positions on the department head pay plan, mid-management professional technical pay plan, and for other non-union positions, as recommended by the town administrator, as appearing in Attachment C. I will also move that, effective July 1, 2018, longevity benefit for staff classified within the department head and mid-management professional technical pay plan, schedules confidential department staff and other applicable non-union personnel shall be increased from 10 to 15 years on their employment anniversary date, 6/25, 15 to 20 years on their anniversary date, 7/75, 20 to 30 years, 950, 30-plus, 1102, 10 to 15 years, 750, 15 to 20 years, 900, 20 to 30 years, 1250, and 30-plus years, 1400. And I'll also move that we authorize eligibility of employees within the mid-management professional technical pay plan for the department head long-term disability program to increase the in lieu of boot allowance for confidential non-union employees from 350 to 550, effective July 1, 2018, to approve a change in the weekly pay date from Thursday to Friday, and to modify the pay period frequency from weekly to bi-weekly. So those are the motions. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton. And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. If I could just say, on behalf of the town, and hopefully, I think, the board, I want to thank all the department heads and the mid-management people who work so hard and really are the ones who implement things day, day after day here, sometimes under difficult circumstances, but we're not complaining. But I did, I did want to take this opportunity to thank all the department heads and our senior management personnel. Thank you.
Mr. Kluckner, can I ask one more question? You mentioned three people who are not on an annual schedule, town administrator, town council, and who's the third one?
Fire chief.
Oh, fire chief. Isn't he down here?
If he is, I should have.
Yeah, John, so.
Yeah, okay, well, I believe that he shouldn't have been on that list because he's in the midst of a multi-year term, so I'll, I'll correct that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Moving on, we have a report from the Select Board Committee on Warrant Article 29, Animal Control Training.
That's me.
That is. And this is warrant article 29 from the November 2016 special town meeting.
So you have in your packet the final report of the warrant article 29 report, which is, select person Woszynski said was, came out at the November 2016 special town meeting, which directed the Select Board to study and report on the question of determining whether the Police Department should provide additional training for police in the handling of dog attacks. And as you probably know, this arose out of a vicious dog attack here in Brookline that prompted the neighborhood to sort of get together, ask for a hearing, and submit warrant articles to the Select Board to address issues of the reporting of incidents like this, and to look at whether we need further training for police officers in connection with animal incidents. So the, the, the warrant article addressing reporting of incidents was a moderator's committee, and it issued its report last year, and this committee, which is a Select Board Committee, as I said, issued, is issuing its report now. After the committee started its work, Chief O'Leary issued a special order that substantially addressed many of the concerns of the proponents of warrant article 29. The committee continued to study the issues raised by the warrant article and considered the special order in its deliberations and recommendations. I'd like to say that the victim of the dog attack and the neighbors, according to Gary Jones, who was a proponent of the warrant articles, are very appreciative of how the town has taken up this issue and dealt with it, including the victim of the attack, who has moved to New Hampshire, but communicated that she was appreciative of what we've all done, the town has done. So the follow-up to this report is the following. The report makes a series of recommendations to the Select Board and to various town departments, the police, health, the schools, and information technology. If the Select Board does not object to the report, it should be circulated to the departments mentioned in the recommendations for their review and consideration. We're not saying that these have to be done, or the recommendations have to be taken up, but, you know, should be considered by various departments. And secondly, we've drafted, or we've redrafted the chief's original special order into a proposed general order to deal with animal issues in the Police Department. So the Select Board should initiate a process of issuing this as a proposed, as a general order, which would mean asking town council and the Police Department to do a final review and put it, put it into proper form of a general order, and then submit it to the Select Board for its vote. There is a slight issue with the materials that were given to you. There's a hearing section in the special or general order, or hearing, a session on hearing procedures, that was in the original special order that the committee did not have any problems with or revisions to. That inadvertently got left out of the materials that you received. So the general order, proposed general order, you would just include that as an additional part to the, to the document. So unless anyone has any questions.
So the next steps would be what?
So circulating this report to, to the various departments, I mean, they've been participating in the. participating in the deliberations of the committee, but as a formality circulated to house department, IT, and the police department, just to make sure they don't have any final, you know, edits or corrections. And then, you know, they can decide whether the recommendations are worth pursuing, and they will pursue it if they think they are. And then, you know, process the special or general order to be submitted to the select board at a future.
Okay, so what I would suggest, okay, so this will be circulated, and I would suggest there'd be a report back to us on what the, what each, which, what each of the departments decides to do. And probably the time to do it would be when we implement the general order.
Okay.
The other thing I would suggest is at the next town meeting that this be circulated in the combined report with the, with whatever the disposition is, you know, each of the departmental decisions. So, uh, town meeting knows what happened when they made that referral to a committee.
Right, we will do that.
I actually did have a few questions, which I hope are sort of softballs. I don't mean to put--
Hardball is great.
So one of the things that I observed in the report is that there's a variety of different types of local bylaws. So Newton's got a bylaw, Watertown, Brockton. And I didn't see in the recommendation section, a recommendation that we tweak our existing bylaw in town. Did that get any discussion, or did it, was it just something that you felt like you could--
Well, yeah, we had a little discussion of that. We didn't feel that, you know, there was anything in the bylaws that weren't covered either in our bylaw, the special order, or just state law in general. So we didn't feel that it was really necessary to go, you know, into that elaborate.
It just seemed like, particularly in the Watertown bylaw, there were some additional definitions that may be applicable, but I defer to the committee on that, who's obviously spent more time. My other question is around the recommendations for police staffing. So there was a recommendation that, um, that the number of animal control officers go from one to two and that we examine a separate police unit. I was wondering if the committee thought about whether that meant an increase in head count in the police department, or if that separate unit that potentially would be set up would be sworn police officers or civilians.
No, the, the idea would be, would, was that they would be sworn police officers, but we could put that in, not expecting that it would be acted upon immediately, but so the police department would think about that proposal and determine whether it makes sense, the cost associated with that, which we gave some estimates of what the cost would be for a head, and, you know, make the decision based on their, you know, thinking that through.
I look forward to the reports, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there was, there was some sentiment that, you know, we put this in even though we, we knew that wouldn't be something that would immediately be implemented or even, you know, considered.
Okay. Yeah, by all means.
I would just like some clarification on, you know, what happens in these situations. It kind of bothers me that apparently when a situation like this happens, the dog is not automatically quarantined until there can be a hearing and a dangerousness determination. And to me, that doesn't, at least that's how I read this. Is that, is that the case?
The dog had, it's not automatically quarantined, it's really a question of, you know, what the particular facts are in the incident.
Well, but I mean, a dog bites somebody.
More than likely that dog's gonna be quarantined in addition to--
But in this case, he wasn't.
Well--
No, I think it was.
Yeah.
I mean, the case with the--
With Gary Jones.
Yeah, it was quarantined.
So there's quarantine, and then there's removed and put in a kennel, removed from the owner.
Okay, when I think of quarantine, I think of, we quarantine it, not the owner, because, I mean, in this, you know, the question is, what is the reliability of the owner in terms of actually carrying out the quarantine? And that's what worries me.
Well--
We're using quarantine in two different ways, I think.
Because people obviously, you know, love their pets, and they, they believe that this, this incident is an aberration. And, you know, being a dog owner and a dog lover, I, I get that. But at the same time, I think we need to make a determination as to whether--
Who the responsible party is.
Correct. And, uh, you know, whether or not this dog is likely to do again, and all those issues.
Yeah. So that's the decision that the animal control officer makes. In this case, he wasn't available, and another officer came out, and there was a quarantine of the dog with the, with the owner, as I recall. So--
But I, I guess--
And it's not a situation that you can say a hard and fast rule, that if there's an incident with a dog, it will be taken to a shelter or--
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that. I mean, I, you know, um, I would feel better if we knew that this, the person who's replacing the animal control officer had sufficient training to be able to make that difficult decision. But when you're asking someone who's not, doesn't have the same training to make the decision, then I think that's more problematic. In any case, I, I do have a problem with that.
But what the general, what this proposed general order does is lay out for a backup officer, you know, detailed steps that they have to take, including making that determination. And there's backup from his superior officer, who would be even more trained in terms of how to deal with this, and would have access to the animal control officer, you know, if possible, you know, bring him in. And, you know, in terms of the training of the officers who will be back, who service backup, additional training in the special order or general order is going to be part of the regular training of the police department. So, you know, there's some, I mean, it's not as if these officers are coming in cold without any knowledge and without any backup.
Well, I understand that. I just think that dog bites are pretty serious, and that at least a very short period of quarantine, quarantining the dog would send a message to the owner. The dog's not gonna know, but--
I think your terminology probably should be impoundment, as I look at it.
Impoundment, yes. No, I agree. You're right. Quarantine suggests that the dog has some disease and you're waiting to see whether it's rabid or whatever. And that's not my concern here, because most dogs, unless the dog has not had its rabies vaccine, which I presume it had. But I think impounding the dog, at least until there can be a hearing, and a speedy hearing at that, but I just think that that's a better procedure and better protection for the public. And, you know, this woman was pretty seriously injured, and I'd hate to think if it could have been wor-- could have been worse, and it could have been a child. And I, you know, I think we need an obligation to protect people. That's all I'm saying. And protect them is a little more robustly than--
So, yeah, so, I mean, in response, I mean, the general order just provides a means whereby, or process whereby the officer who's on the scene, whether that's, that's the animal control officer or another officer, makes a judgment as to whether, you know, it's necessary to impound the dog or to just quarantine with the, with the owner. And that's, you know, judgment called, that's based on, you know, their experience and, you know, in consultation with their superior officers.
I still think that's a difficult decision to make right on the spot. You don't know. You don't always have all the facts. You don't, you haven't been able to interview your neighbors. You don't know how the dog has behaved in other situations, which that all, that kind of thing takes time. So I, I guess, you know, we'll agree to disagree about this, but I, I do have some problems with that piece of it.
So do you want to suggest that, that that be changed to--
Yeah, 48 hours impoundment.
At least, at least we ought to, I mean, we should give the police department opportunity to consider that.
I'll specifically ask for some input on that.
Yeah, I'm a little wary on automatic, but--
But, you know, ask, ask them what they think.
Yeah, I, there's a question, at least for me. I don't disagree with your comments necessarily, but I'd like to know what we're actually empowered to do. You know, there's some, there's some limit on what, what powers, what authority the police department has automatically without going through some determination that a dog represents an immediate threat. You can't just--
Take property.
It's unclear to me whether we can automatically just say, there's been a, a dog bite, we're gonna impound the, the animal for 24 or 48 hours, whatever the time is. So, this practically what, what we may want to do, and there's legally what we can't do.
Okay, so we will submit that for--
I suddenly hear other towns, of, of, other towns, you know--
Yeah, that may be.
And sometimes they euthanize it all, because--
Well, I can't be done without a hearing.
But, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I, you know, and obviously, that has to be the hearing, but I'm just concerned about if there's, and a bite that resulted in serious injury, I think it's a problem.
Okay, so we're right on time for a public hearing on a grant of location for Comcast to run some conduits right across the street from this building on Pierce Street, Holden Street, and Washington Street. So why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what's happening?
Good evening. Tim Quartel with Comcast. We have Ed Gallagher here, the PC for the, for Brookline. So we are proposing to put about 300 feet with the laterals out on Washington Street, adding a manhole, and a couple vaults in the sidewalks. This is gonna be to service some residential and commercial properties. Also on Holden Street, we propose about 500 feet with laterals, also with one manhole and a couple of vaults. And then we have a small piece here going to our existing manhole out on Pierce Street.
Sounds like a lot of digging.
Yeah, we, uh, we think about two weeks, give or take.
And what kind of trenching? Wide trenching?
Yeah, two feet wide. I have our contractor here, if you'd like him to come up and explain a little more.
Well, sure.
We also were wondering if maybe like a Saturday, working out on Holden Street, 'cause I know there's obviously a lot of business here during the day. We might propose something like that to help ease the traffic.
Okay, well, tell us about the, the work you're gonna be doing. Come up to the microphone, so our vast TV audience can hear.
Vincent Baroni, PV Baroni Corp. The trenching's just a two-foot wide trench, down two feet, backfilled with concrete, around the pipe, backfilled with gravel, compacted and paved. And we're working on, once the mucks, when digs safely mucked out, we'll check the route according to the plans. We, we're good with traffic, but it is a congested area, and we think Saturdays combined with the weekdays will help the project.
Do you see a lot of impact for traffic on Washington Street? Um, that's a busy street, you know, right, right here on Holden and Pierce, those are not so busy. And then especially now that school is out.
Today.
Today? Okay, good.
Today's the last day? Today was the last day? A lot of happy kids today.
Not happy parents.
Uh, when do you see yourself starting, assuming we--
I mean, that's all up to the town.
So you're, you're raring to go?
I, I mean, we can start whatever's easiest for the town. We just wanted to check the impact with, you know, being so close to town hall.
Yeah, that, that would be a good thing to check.
That's the correct answer.
Are you specifically asking about the Saturday?
No, we'll be working weekday, too. It's too big of a project. Got to do it, you know.
Do they need special permission to work on Saturday?
I don't believe so.
So that's--
If you wanted to make a requirement, you could.
Okay, so I'm saying you'll be working from 9:00 to 3:30. Um, okay, so there's gonna be some impact to some of the parking around here when you're working in the area?
We'll take the spaces to a minimum just for that one day.
Ah, okay.
And just equipment and everything to a minimum, to not impact the area being so congested.
Questions?
Do I have a question?
I have a feeling I know the question you're gonna ask. And Mr. Ditto better start coming forward, so--
Mr. Ditto clearly anticipated my question, because he apparently emailed Mr. Barkus and Timothy Quartel at Comcast. So, okay, so what did you find out about the gas leaks?
So I emailed Mr. Barkus last Friday. He wasn't in, and he was kicked down to a fellow named Peter Nagel over at National Grid. And I emailed him today, I'm saying, even if, can you give me anything tonight so I can bring it to the board? And he said, and I quote, "Based on my research, there is no outstanding leaks on that reach, that stretch." I believe he's talking about the, the conduit. I asked him, you know, if they have any outstanding leaks, if they could expedite the coordination with Comcast to get that done at the same time. But on his, on his statement, he's saying there's nothing out there.
Well, can we get a written statement from him about that, or written email response?
Yeah, I've got it here.
Oh, you got the written response?
Yes.
So that if we do find leaks, we can go back and say, hey, you know, you made a mistake and you need to fix it. Right?
Of course, if Comcast is doing this work in the next few weeks, National Grid is in the midst of a labor dispute, so.
Of course, doing business. I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah. Um, any questions from the board?
I've got a question about storage of materials and equipment. Where are you gonna store materials and equipment that are anticipated to be used in the coming days but aren't being utilized overnight or for a couple of days in the future?
We just bring what we need that day, and we take back everything at night. So there won't be any equipment left on the road.
Perfect, okay.
And if anything, if we can't backfill a spot, someone has to wait next table, steel plate.
Great, thank you.
Nothing will be, nothing at all.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak, this is your time. I see none. Are we ready for a motion? Okay. So I will move that we grant the petition of Comcast for permission to construct a location for such line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public ways. Pierce Street conduit running westerly from Holden Street, a distance of about 66 feet. Holden Street conduit running south westerly from Pierce Street, a distance of 371 feet, to Washington Street with a new manhole number one, and two new vaults on Washington Street conduit running southeasterly from new manhole number two at Holden Street, a distance of-- a distance of about two-hundred-ten feet to a new manhole number three, and three new vaults. And I would like to propose a condition that the work be complete by the start of school.
Not in issue.
Which would be like the Thursday after Labor Day.
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday?
September fourth.
Oh, that's...
So, whenever school starts, we want you out of there.
Is there any, do you guys have any large events planned here at Town Hall? I'm not sure.
No.
I'm sure I can check the website, we'll definitely work around.
Not that I'm aware of.
We usually go down to a summer schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome.
And the schedule of work will leave up to Mr. Ditto to determine?
Right, yeah. They don't need any special permits for Saturday work. Sunday work, they need probably...
Stay away from that.
Yeah.
Well, if they're saying that it's not a problem, I mean, the teachers go back earlier, I think some of the kids may...
But, traffic doesn't pick up till when school starts?
They're indicating it's not a problem, so...
Yeah, we should be in and out.
Yeah, okay, so, the condition is be out of there, be done by the start of school. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Open-air parking renewals, this is item thirteen.
Okay. So, this is the time of year in which we renew the so-called open-air parking lots, the approved lots that are authorized to our zoning, and it is the select board's responsibility for licensing under our zoning. There are a number of them, and you see them listed. We always have some additional issues, so there's a list of, one, two, three, four, five licensees who have not submitted their information, or it's late for whatever reason. What we like to do in these situations is approve them conditional, and if they come in, we will charge them a late fee. And then we have a number of them that, you know, through the review, we find that in some cases, there's more parking, there's more vehicles parked than is permitted. Now, some of those require a lot of follow-up, because it could be an owner's car or something, and, but, we would like to continue to look at those. But, our recommendation is you approve those conditional with a thirty-day deadline for response, so that we can communicate with these owners and update information if necessary.
Yeah, I want to support the last statement that Mr. Collectner made. The fire department wrote to us that they've had an issue with one lot for multiple years, and looking at what's permitted and was actually observed, in some cases, it's more than a hundred percent, the number of vehicles that were actually present exceeds the number that they're licensed for, and that is concerning to me.
Well, if you approve it for that thirty-day period, I can assure you that we'll have a more rigorous review, and, you know, there are issues, frankly. There are some temporary issues that happen, and, or perhaps when somebody went by, they really weren't all clear what the parameters of the open-air parking is. But, we will definitely double-check, and if there's any issues that we find, we will bring those to your attention and deal with them as necessary.
Okay. So, the motion is to renew the licenses referenced on pages thirteen to through...
Thirteen-five.
Thirteen-five. And then for locations thirteen oh-nine and thirteen nineteen Beacon, one thirty-seven Harvard, sixteen forty-six Beacon, forty-one Gorham, and three ninety-seven Washington, we will renew them, conditioned on payment of appropriate fee and filing of appropriate paperwork.
Yes.
And then for one-ten Babcock, eight-hundred Boylston, seventy-two Francis, fifty-six Harvard, sixty-six Harvard, four thirteen Harvard, one-oh-one Longwood, one-oh-five Longwood, one-eleven Longwood, eighty-three Longwood, one-twenty-three Longwood, twelve St. Paul, six thirty-seven Washington, twenty-seven Winslow, and forty-one Winslow, that we approve the license conditionally with a thirty-day deadline for response, to clear up any issues.
And just for clarification, on page thirteen-three of our packet, there's one license which is crossed out, and I assume that that's not included in the...
That's correct.
Omnibus.
So, is, are those, are those the motions? Okay, so, I'm not going to repeat that.
Kevin, just to ask you a question. Thirteen-seven, page thirteen-seven and thirteen-eight are a different list. Is this the same as the list that we're already loading on? I don't know.
No, I think that's just showing, uh, well, what is that list?
Probably is, yeah.
So...
It's a worksheet, I think. Well, let's see. I'm not sure that it's in order, it sounds was hard to read.
Seven-two St. Paul.
Well, I guess it's...
Because I noticed that forty-one Winslow and twenty-seven Winslow are on the first page, but the others of them don't seem to be, so I'm just confused as to why some of them are on the page and some of them aren't.
Which ones, which one do you think is not on there?
Well, where is seventy-two St. Paul? It's certainly not on the first page.
It's right on the top. Yeah, it's right, that's, oh, so it's right here.
Yeah, I know, I know it's on that list.
So, where is it in the...
Where is it on the other list?
Thirteen-two to five. It's at the bottom of page thirteen-four. So, yeah, it's a worksheet showing...
The observation, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, uh...
I'm not sure why it goes in that order, I guess, seems all about it, I don't know sure why. St. Paul is first, but...
And so, why does it have no, no permits in seventeen actual?
Well, thirteen-sevens made two thousand seventeen, and the other list is dated two thousand eighteen.
Thirteen-seven, I think, is some sort of a worksheet. I'm not really sure it's an official document that you should be, I'm not clear why it's here.
Okay. We have that, we have the motion before us. All those in favor of that motion? Please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we have some policy matters to talk about. So, the first one is something that came out of Dick Banker's public comments to us last week, and it related to a policy statement that his church was making regarding the actions of federal government relating to separating families as they cross the border and ask for asylum. And I think certainly aye, and, and my feeling is that other members of the board are, were, have been appalled at that practice. And, and select person Green so graciously volunteered to help draft a statement that would form a policy statement of this board. So, select person Green.
Yes, the board was moved after Mr. Banker's statement to think about what we could do, and, you know, the idea of a statement similar to the one we issued in February of two thousand seventeen came to mind. And since we can't sort of put together a committee to draft something that would be a final form for us to vote on, I took, or I agreed to draft something and then presented to the board for us to deliberate in open session, and either agree or, agree or not to issue the statement, and to make whatever edits, changes, you know, people thought were appropriate. So, this is a moving target, this immigration situation, it's very complex. And I did receive a few comments from, from staff people, and from Mr. Waschinsky, who I shared my initial draft with. And thinking through, I decided to, you know, make some additional suggested changes to the original draft, which is in front of you in red-line format. So, yeah, the attempt here is to make a connection between what's going on on the southern border and Brookline, and that connection is in the form of, you know, showing how the people who are fleeing countries in Central and South America, or Central America, for the U.S. because of the violence and other problems in those countries are really no different from the people who are the ancestors, or parents, grandparents, and other ancestors of Brookline residents. So, we should really feel that, you know, this is something that has a connection to all of us. So, it was an attempt to make those connections, and to, you know, make our, state our concern with this, what I view as basic denial of human rights, and basic denial of constitutional rights, which is not just something that's affecting those people out there on the board, but is, you know, it looks like the future of all of us under the current administration, administration in Washington. So, that's sort of the source of the, or what's here in this statement. One thing I would like people to think about is whether the list of proposed specific actions that the select board would be recommending is something we want to include in this. I think they're good things to suggest to people, but is it something that the board would want to itself put out there as our suggestions to people, so...
You know, I think it's part of the education of the public, and in an effort to let people know what it is they can do, it's helpful. One thing that I've been thinking about recently is listening to news, is the question of what happens to the children who have already been taken, and who, you know, it's horrifying to think that there might not be any kind of tracking system in place, so that, for instance, if a two-year-old has been separated from his or her parents, how is the two-year-old going to be able to say, you know, "My mom is, my dad is so-and-so?" And if that child has not been tracked properly, and there's no documentation, and I suspect, who knows whether there is or there isn't? It's not clear. And I'm appalled that we could be doing that kind of thing without, I mean, I'm appalled that we can do it, we're doing it anyway, and, you know, in the first place, but without, without any kind of documentation.
I'm wondering, in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, okay, so, "The Brookline Select Board joins bipartisan chorus of voices demanding an end to the un-American practice of separating children from their parents." In here, this can be, where, Trump seems to have backed off the policy, but we don't know about the status.
Right, this doesn't address that.
So, maybe...
What I try to do is avoid, you know, to the extent possible, dealing with specific details of all the things that are going on, because they're changing constantly.
Right, right, so...
And we don't really know.
So, maybe it just needs another sentence after the word turmoil.
Well, it needs to say that children already detained or already separated.
Should be returned to their families forthwith, or...
You know, immediately, or ASAP, or whatever, but...
Well, I think, is it in here? And we're demanding an end to the un-American practices of separating children from their parents, et cetera, et cetera.
The paragraph where it actually states "our policy as it affects this" is the next one.
Right.
Where we're saying, "We're not going to use any town resources to support this policy, and we've prohibited the town from entering into a contract with the Department of Justice, Customs, ICE, to provide jail space, et cetera." You know, that's, so that's a, that's a good, clear policy statement, certainly under our purview, and one that I certainly support.
And then the next paragraph talks about what would happen if these kids happened to show up in Brookline without our knowledge. And, you know, we're not going to send the police to fight them, or fight the, to fight ICE, but we are going to pursuant to our previous policies, provide whatever support we can, you know, to the kids, and, you know, seek, as they're reuniting, being reunited with their parents. Now, you know, that's somewhat vague, because, you know, there's very little we'd be able to do, other than, you know, make noise and...
Yeah. We are a local government, and this is a national, this is an action of the federal government, which is...
On the other hand, it, you know, I feel like they would get more humane treatment if we took custody of them than if we left in the federal government.
But not in our jail.
No, not in a jail, I mean, we're going to foster...
Well, what would happen with, what's happening in New York, and that is, they would, I don't know, what's happening in New York, these kids are being given to foster parents, and then during the day, they go into this center that, you know, hopefully is licensed by the state, but, you know, the...
You mean like daycare?
Like a daycare center. But, you know, the kids are traumatized, and the center's not really set up to do anything about that trauma, so, you know, if it ever had happened here, we would, you know, hopefully try to intervene to provide some support to these kids.
So, I want to respond to the question that select person Green posed in the beginning here about sort of second page, the actions that we could take. I'm not sure how I feel about including those in a statement. I think in some ways it weakens the statement of the board, but I will say that I am uncomfortable with the way that the last paragraph on the... But I will say that I am uncomfortable with the way that the last paragraph on the first page is phrased. I think the sentiment is right, but presumably this is a statement that's going to go out on letterhead, and it's going to be an official statement of the Select Board on behalf of the town. And the fact that we would call upon residents of Brookline to do something makes me uncomfortable. If I was signing it as an individual, I would certainly sign it, but I'm not sure that the executive branch of municipal government should be calling upon their citizens to do something. It seems more like a direction of an official actor, a legal government, rather than what it should be is a statement of values of this Board.
Well, that's why I raised the question about all of the steps that are included there. And, you know, I'm sort of...
Well, maybe those can be put onto, maybe we could have a special link on our website, you know, which, if you want to help, go to Blanket Blank and hear some suggestions.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the right way to phrase it. You know, if you want to make your voice heard, these are some ways you can do it. I would, I don't have exact language here, but for that last paragraph, I would do something similar to, "The Brookline Select Board joins residents of the Town of Brookline and other communities in opposition to the administration's inhumane policies." And then maybe go on as Select Person Heller just articulated, "If you do want to make your, your voice heard, you do want to weigh in, here are some ways you can do it."
I do like the inclusion of, "Be concerned for the countries of origin of people fleeing to the U.S." I think a lot of people remain ignorant as to why people are coming here in the first place, and then teach your children empathy. I just...
So, is the, is the, and what is the consensus in terms of even including these seven items?
I think I echo Select Person Heller and Franco, that they should probably be, you know, for more information, you know, please visit our website on ways to get involved.
Here are things, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I also wrote so that without that, the statement is coherent.
Yeah.
So... So, here's, here's my suggestion. Why don't we, based on the comments, Select Person Green, why don't you make adjustments? And then let's, let's post it on the website as a proposed statement of the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. And then, so it'll be out there, and then at our next meeting, we vote it.
On the, the 10th, July 10th?
Which Select Person Green isn't here, but that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Just make sure we have the word documented. So, that way, it's been exposed, and then, and then you know what we can do. We can, when we put on the calendar, let's, discussion, possible vote, and public comment on it.
Yeah.
So, that way, we've exposed it for public comment. Okay.
That's the plan.
Thank you for taking that on.
Very well written.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to a couple of big planning items. So, the first is coming out of a recommendation of the Advisory Committee regarding the Long Range Financial Review Committee. And there's a draft charge in your packet. Have, have, have we sent this to anyone?
Nobody.
Okay. I'm, can I suggest...
Well, I think we may have, we may have sent something to Sean Lynn Jones. I'm not sure if I...
Yeah, we should certainly...
So, he gets a copy of the packet, and he did note that he saw this on the Board's agenda and was happy to see that it was.
Yeah, I saw that email.
This is a Select Board committee, so...
I know it's a Select Board, but a committee, but I, I think this is one where I would welcome their...
Well, I pulled a lot of the language from their resolution as well, so...
Right, which is a good thing. So, the fourth bullet, examine the outcomes of town school programs, so as to determine prioritization of essential town school services, boy, that's a...
Highly huge.
I mean, that's, that's a huge undertaking, and, you know, how do you, you know, some of these things are...
How do you quantify it?
A ten-year look back, you know, in terms of...
And it also requires us to make judgments about school programs and, and school curriculum and the medical programs, the real speech programs, and that's a kind of dangerous, you know, task to undertake.
Well, I think in terms of trying to solve the structural deficit, there needs to be options presented, and I think that's kind of the, the lens that that bullet is trying to...
Or maybe examine metrics of selected town and school programs. So, so rather than, if, if, if this group is going to be, the way, the way this is written, it's like, okay, examine every program in the town and the school and determine its, its efficiency and are they having all the right...
Yeah, the school, the public schools have answered to the school committee, to the, just an elected body, and town meeting authorizes an overall budget. We don't have the right to decide what programs they do and what programs they don't have. So, I have a problem with, you know, I know that...
All of this is really subject to the Select Board. I mean, they're, they'll make their report to the Select Board.
We could add language that they would recommend things to the Select Board and the school committee.
So, I'm not sure that Bullet Point Four, Bullet Point Four is feasible for two reasons. One, it's a pretty substantial body of work, so I have time concerns. Mr. Kluckner and I had an exchange about this. It was more of a one-sided exchange. I asked questions, and Mr. Kluckner sent me an email back, and I never replied. So, this April 19th deadline is proximate, especially if we consider the fact that we're not going to do appointments, and this committee isn't going to start getting down to business until the early fall at best, which I know is a similar timeline to.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and really, this is a lot, our, our, we, we know on the revenue side what we're doing for the next three years, so there's no, in April 2019, char, you know, that's kind of an artificial deadline.
Well, so, the timeline conversation is a meaty one in and of itself. I've also got skill set questions. We don't know who's going to be on this committee. And in order to do this, carry out this, what outcome program review in a responsible way, it takes some skills, which I don't know if they're going to be represented on the committee or not. I haven't seen any applications yet, so it's entirely possible that it may work out, but we also may get people who don't have that, that experience or that skill set.
Well, I mean, analyzing school programs is an art, you know, is...
I mean, maybe as an alternative, we could ask this group to identify ways in which other, you know, in the future, or, you know, maybe best practices evaluating town and school programs. So, if we wanted to really do that, the next time around, we could hire somebody to do that, or, rather than asking them to actually do it, is letting us know what is the best practices for evaluating outcomes or effectiveness of programs.
Wouldn't a more useful thing for this committee to get is the school committees and the towns' list of their priorities based on their goals and their mission, et cetera? For example, the schools, you know, can tell us, you know, what is the, what are the educational goals for the, for the schools over the next few years, and therefore, from that standpoint, what are their priorities? And that, that at least give us some knowledge as to, you know, the difficulties of, you know, any program cut proposals that we may, you know, that may come out of here.
Well, isn't it also, I mean, have, have we discussed this at all with the Board?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Or the superintendent, or the school committee?
Yeah, if, you know, if we're going to be posing any kind of program review that includes the schools, that they need...
Not only that, I think they do their own program review.
Right.
And so, you know, we should know what those are. I mean, if, if people want to look at, look at it, I mean, I'm sure that's not a problem, but we shouldn't presume that, you know, this committee is going to do it, duplicate that work. We don't have the, I, I sincerely, you know, seriously doubt that without professional assistance, that we could actually have people who could do this.
And it's, the committee's also going to have to focus. You know, you can't go in and say, oh, we're going to study everything.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of this committee, in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm one out of five voices here, is to try and figure out how we navigate the mismatch between the increase in cost of government services and school services and the two and a half percent plus-ish...
New growth.
Yeah, plus new growth that, that we get in revenue. So, we've got a, we've got a mismatch here. And six out of the seven bullets here refer to that problem in, from one angle or another. And then we have this examine the outcomes of town and school programs to determine prioritization. That's, that's a, it's sort of the second part of that conversation. It's, how do we, how do we get enough money, and then, you know, what do we, what do we do with that information? How do we spread the, the money around? It just sort of seems like inappropriate for, for this, this group, and a sort of follow-on task, rather than something that should be done at first pass. So, do you want to just strike that bullet then, or...
I would myself, because I think it's too, it's too big.
Well, you know, you're, the bullet before kind of gets at perhaps something that is in, something that can be done by a committee like this. And, and, and this is something that's been done by past override study committees to varying degrees, identify areas of efficiency of best practice delivery of town and school services, and typically, I'm thinking back to 2008, where departments' heads were kind of polled, and then the committee, out of the polling, selected some areas of focus. So, so we started with input from departments, and then, then, then the committee decided, okay, we, we were given a 20, 25 areas, we're going to focus on four. Four that seemed the most promising in terms of spending our time.
I suppose the committee could make some recommendations about professional examinations of town and school programs. I wouldn't want to do it. I, I think it's a mistake to ask volunteers to do that kind of work.
Yeah.
I think that's too, it's too significant if, you know, we don't know who's going to be doing it, and we don't know that we have a person who's trained to do it. I think it's, it's a bad idea.
Bad idea, yeah.
What?
No, I'm sorry.
So, but I do think, you know, we could, the committee could make some recommendations about how to support professional examinations or professional reviews, program reviews.
Are you, are you, I'm hesitant.
Because that costs money, and so...
That's what I was thinking.
I'm a little hesitant to make recommendations regarding school programs.
No, not, not make recommendations regarding the program, or recommendations regarding this, the provision of professional reviews of, you know, in other words...
You recommend recommendations for another committee.
Or some other entity.
No, not a committee, no, 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 no.
So, as, as an example, the efficiency committee identified areas like fire department and fleet maintenance and DPW, that then, after they were done with the work, we did separate studies on those as well.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that, that we have the in-house expertise to do these. I'm saying, and maybe the school department does, but I'm thinking that they, they might not. Depends on the program selected, I guess, but I, I, the question is, how are we going to fund professional reviews of whatever programs are selected? And that's, I think, one thing we've learned, is that we're not, we're not going to get good enough answers or recommendations when we have volunteers doing this stuff.
Well, I'm not sure about that. I think timing and the amount of time people have to deliver is directly related to the...
Quality.
Quality, not, the quality isn't the right word, the, sort of the, the depth of the investigation that takes place. So, I have every confidence that if we had volunteers doing this effort, and we gave them three years to do it, we would come back with a very high-quality report that was detailed and was a roadmap. If we give them six months to do it, it's going to be a different report.
Let me, maybe I'm miss, maybe I'm not understanding you, but it seems to me that what we really want here is for the school committee, the experts, so-called, to, I think I said this, start with their mission, and from that mission prioritize, or show what their priorities in terms of programs are. What that's useful for is to give us some sense of the constraints on our ability to, to control expenses over the long run, and, you know, where, you know, we can suggest looking at different approaches to programming or evaluation of programming.
I'm just thinking of past committees we've had. So, we've had committees that have studied policies, policy review committee, and then we've had an efficiency committee, and then we've had override study committees. And one of the things coming out of advisory is, one, we should not, this should not be an override study committee. So, each of those committees had a very big job to do. You know, the policy can be reviewed, policies, efficiency committee, et cetera. This charge is kind of, we're asking this committee to do everything that all of those committees have done, which I think is too much, and is, is not a, so, I think we need to focus this more.
Well, so, would you like this to be a 1994 effort, a 2008 effort, a 2012 effort? What do you, what's, what do you see as sort of the model that should be followed?
Well, so...
Ninety-four.
That's where I am, but...
No.
I didn't know you were going to say that.
So, okay, ninety-four. So, okay, ninety-four. So, that's the model. Does this reflect that model? And, and I, I don't even know what that means, because, you know, I, it was before I started paying attention to town affairs. I was off doing my own thing back then.
Well, I, I mean, I clearly wasn't present either. I've read the report, but...
I was present.
You're a step beyond me.
We can provide you with the charge or, you know, some of the summary documents that establish their charge, I suppose.
I didn't find a charge in the report when I, I looked through all of the old committees to see if I could pull some items from that. I didn't see a charge.
So, it seems to me, the first, the charge, we, we need to charge them with something that we think is doable within a reasonable timeframe, and I, I think this is just too much.
I think April of 2019 is too soon. Anyway, and then don't forget, this is a long range, supposed to be a long-range look.
Yeah, and by the time we get people on this committee, I mean, this is only a couple more weeks than we had with the 2017 override study.
So, we, we, and, and, but, and we're not quite as rushed this time. You know, we don't have a, you know, a, a March 1st deadline to get something on a ballot, you know, so that's not our goal here.
Yeah, but it's, it's still only like six more weeks than...
Right.
So, I, I think that's the first thing we need to do is to, to make a change to that date. But the second thing is that we need to be realistic. I think bullet number four really expands the work in a way that...
Yeah, I, I, I see that, and that's why it was suggested, I think, as you did a little while ago, so, suggest maybe just ways, ways in which the town might, in the future, evaluate outcomes. But all the others, I, I really think that that's, it's hard to do one without the other. If you're looking for a comprehensive review of our, of our one-term financial situation, I, I think all those other areas are, are important.
Yeah.
To some level.
What, what, what is bullet number one supposed to say other than our alternatives are eliminating proposition two and a half, unlikely, or keeping spending within two and a half plus, or...
Reducing expenditures as well.
Well, alternatives is basically...
Or find other means of growing revenues such as... No, that's already in here.
Isn't that already number, number six?
And act, analyze potential sources of new non-residential property tax revenue. Because I think a key strategy is economic development, improvement of our commercial areas and our commercial tax base.
Yeah, I, I suppose your first bullet is more of sort of the summary of what all these, all these things are. I mean, all the alternatives are, you know, basically listed below to some level, I guess. Quantifying assessed capacity to pay isn't itself an alternative, but it's important to know. I think it's a very important thing to know. And that's not really all that difficult, I guess, but with the feature of the changes in federal tax law, that could be complicated.
Well, you know, how, how do you measure capacity to pay? You know, we've, we've looked at our, our taxes in relation to other communities. Does that really measure capacity?
Well, there's objective measures of, of capacity to pay that are done. So, I, you know, I think that there is, you know, you look at perhaps family revenue, family income, I should say, and amounts that, I think you just have to...
That's why we didn't have that information.
We have it on a, on a large scale.
There's aggregated, you know, we, we know medians and trends and median and stuff like that.
A lot of this is, is you have to do some benchmarking and there's no, there's no magic number out there, but, you know, I think it is instructive when we look at other jurisdictions and other parts of...
So, here's the most important comment of the evening. This name stinks. And the acronym stinks.
Well, we're open to suggestions.
LRFERC.
I think that the ninety-four committee was actually called FPAC, which is Financial Policy...
Yeah.
Advisory Committee. That's what it was called, FPAC, which isn't, that isn't bad.
Well, there's a, there's a vowel in there.
We're doing a lot more than reviewing fiscal policies.
The name we can figure out. What's the path forward to get the, the charge sort of nailed down? Are we...
Well, can we somehow either take out number four altogether or, you know...
Yeah, and, and...
Or just make a recommendation as to what, what we need to be analyzed, professional, professional analysis of outcomes of towns and school programs and how we're going to support that. And we need consultant, you know, I believe we probably need consultants who can do that kind of analysis.
How about recommend service areas needing further examination?
Related to outcomes?
Sure, we can put that there.
Because we've done it.
Say it again?
Recommend service areas needing further examination related to outcomes.
Or efficiencies.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's not only recommending that, you know, the areas, it's also saying, where are you going to get the money? Because you've got to provide money for people to, people who engage in this kind of work. And they're not going to just come to Book Line and say, "We'll just do it for free," you know.
No, but in the case of the efficiency committee, a lot of times it was on RFP that helped kind of determine whether or not, you know, for example, grass cutting was something that was bid out and, you know, that, that question of which one is the better choice was put in front of the select board at that time.
Right, but I think that, that these, the programs you're talking about here, town and schools, essential town and school services, well, especially school services, you're talking about outcomes for children, for humans, much harder to determine. And, you know, you can, you can decide about how you should cut the grass and, you know, how often and fertilize it, and that's, that's different.
Thinking back to the efficiency committee, how did they determine what should be studied? Did they interview department heads?
No, the, the list started at the administrative level, in administration, essentially. And then, and then they started interviewing departments after that.
Okay. So, I, I would imagine a similar kind of process. Yeah, no?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Right, okay, that's fair. The, the, the other committees, how large were they? Okay, we, we know the 2013 committee was, you know, seventeen people. That was like, that was a bit, that was, that was a bit much. And then the 2008 committee...
There might have been twelve or so.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
Yeah, something like that. And then...
And then the policy committees were a lot smaller. There were, you know, maybe five to seven members.
Do you remember what the ninety, I don't remember.
So, I, you know, I don't know if seven is the right number. Seven, nine, you know, somewhere in that neck of the woods, seven may be too small.
Would you like to say seven? Two-nine?
In my, I said approximately seven. But I, and then, like, the 2008 committee, it was set up with, the members from advisory, select board, and school committee were, quote, "non-voting ex officios," and then the committee itself, the voting members were citizens. Is, is that a structure versus...
Well, this group is a little different in that they're not recommending an override. They're essentially examining services, service levels.
Back then, it was done to show a degree of independence, I think, in 2008.
Well, we thought about that. In fact, that's one of the issues that Ben and I were discussing, and we thought that if, as long as there was not a majority of those members, that that would ameliorate that concern, but we don't, you know, it's really up to you guys. We're, we're okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I don't know what the right answer is. There's pros and cons. The one thing, if you're bringing new folks in, you don't want them to feel intimidated is the wrong word, but...
Overwhelmed?
You don't want them to feel like they're, they, they need to be overly deferential to the board members who are on the committee. You know, they, they're, they're equals. They need to feel that way. So, that's, it's just something to think about.
It seemed to matter on, on the committee that we just finished serving on, that we were ex officio, and I actually think it made things a little bit easier to kind of keep us a little separated from the deliberations.
Yeah, that, you know, that works for an override study committee, you know, this, do you recall, like, for the policy review committee, were...
There wasn't any of those officials on that committee.
Well, I, I think there was a member of the advisory committee, I think Harry was ex officio.
And he was the chair at that time.
The reason that the ninety-four structure is so appealing to me is it's really an over-the-shoulder review where the town is understandably, based on reading the report, said, "Here's our problem at a 10,000-foot level. We need a review of our policies to make sure they, they align with best practices and are going to achieve our goal. Here's a bunch of information. Tell us what you think." And rather than being a committee that's charged with, in the case of an override study committee, producing a report that drives towards an override question, presumably. And I think that's, I think we, we all sort of know what the problem is, that there's a mismatch between expenditures and anticipated revenues, but we're not really sure what the, what the answer is. And I think, I'm hoping that this committee is going to talk about non-residential tax opportunities to raise funds, potential ways to, to produce efficiencies, you know. They're going to sort of say, "Here's an area where you can explore in, in greater detail" rather than come up with a, a particular outcome.
So, should the, so what you just said is, the committee was told, "Okay, here's the problem. So, should we have a little statement of the problem we want them to examine, which might provide some focus, which is basically, we've got, you know, all these, it's, it's basically on, on, on the school side that we, you know, we've had an explosion and we're in the position of having to build all these schools and staff the schools. Plus, you know, on, on the town side, we've been kind of holding back. And to date, really, the, our solution has been going to voters for the overrides.
Right.
So, we're kind of in a pattern now of, you know, every three years going to the voters. How do, how do we, how do we break out of that pattern? Can we break out of that pattern?
Well, I mean, you know, I, part of the problem is, if you, you know, if you're asking that question, you know, some people might say the answer is to have, you know, forty kids in a class.
Well, that's, that is one policy alternative, and...
Maybe illegal on the state law, statute seventy-one.
Another alternative is that we let people know that every three or four years, they would come back for more money.
Right.
And maybe that was what proposition two and a half was intended to, intended for towns and cities. So, you know, I, you know, we, certainly on the town side, we have done enough studies to, to, to know that the, we have picked all the low-hanging expense fruit already, so what, what's left is, you know, we have some big-ticket items, fire four-man manning, though I'll tell you my experience at the Fire Academy.
Wouldn't want to go in with less.
But this, this is one of the problems, is that, you know, this is, if we have a, a select board member chairing or school committee member chairing, or even an advisory committee chairing, it becomes inherently a political process. And I'm not sure that's what we need. We're already going through the political processes.
And I just stated a, kind of a predisposition...
Right.
That all the low-hanging fruit has been picked. Well, that's my perception. Maybe we need someone to validate that.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm getting at. I think we've got all the information, or most of the information. I'm hoping that we can lay it all out for people who are new and come without preconceived notions about what's possible, what's impossible, what's a good idea, what's a bad idea, and say, make some choices, give us some advice. And that may be an overly broad charge, but I think we, we see sort of replaying the same narrative over and over and over again in these override study committees.
I suppose we could redraft it based on what we're hearing tonight and then, and circulate it to more people, but...
Well, I think the school department...
Yeah, the, yeah, the school department, and I would suggest Mr. Lynn Jones.
Including your comments, if you, you know, you think about it and you have some suggestions, we're, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of different things, so it's hard for us to, to distill it, but we'll give it a try.
Why don't you work with select person Franco on the charge?
Sure, gladly. Thanks, Ben.
Okay. And wherever the charge lands, it's got to be something that's actually doable.
Of course.
And I would even suggest a flexible target timeframe.
Yep.
Because we don't want to create an artificial deadline. Land Bank, now, select person Hamilton has volunteered to, to work on this.
I'm excited.
Okay. This is an interesting, this is an interesting discussion. I've, I've had a number of people approach me to volunteer for both these committees, so I'll, I'll pass the names on. names on.
So, number four, oh, number five, I guess. Consider whether adoption of the Community Preservation Act can be an alternate means of achieving. I think, you know, we should examine that, but we should not, that, that, it's not the only alternative. And it might be that you want to do a land bank at a certain percentage and then adopt the community preservation. Problem is, we, we turned down the Community Preservation Act once in this town. And we've lost...
When the reimbursement rate was a hundred percent.
The reimbursement rate was much higher. So, we've lost the opportunity to, to bring in bigger bucks. And I would want to know whether, what we could get now under that would be, you know, sufficient, and whether, or whether we could...
Also, I'm not sure community, the, the reimbursement under Community Preservation Act would give us flexibility.
Yeah, the, there's a couple of issues with CPA. First is the reimbursement rate, and I believe it's, it's a match. And the match rate last year was something like eleven percent, was really low. Though there is a provision, one of the budgets, House of the Senate proposes raising the surcharge at the registry with a goal of bringing the reimbursement up to thirty percent. So, it's, it's, it's...
Fair.
It's better, but it's, you know...
You're finding larger communities, cities, including Boston, joining the system, and so that obviously just brings down the...
Right.
Increase the...
So, but then, the Community Preservation Act has a administrative structure that is very cumbersome and doesn't mesh well with our budgeting methods. And that's one of the issues that I think made it complex when we tried to implement the CPA. You know, we, we tried to come up with a structure that worked with our CIP, and it was, it was, it was kind of a kludge, to use a term I use professionally.
My question is whether the land bank would give us a little more flexibility?
Well, the, the land bank, as proposed by Mr. LaScoye, kind of was a vehicle of our making, so we could, you make it so it, so it, so it fits. Of course, whether the legislature would go along with that is, is another story, because we need home rule legislation. So, you know, it...
By the way, there is a bill in the legislature to tax Airbnb-type establishments...
Right.
That allows, or allows cities and towns to have a local option tax that would be, that could be dedicated to low-income and moderate-income houses, which is one of the purposes of the land bank. So, I mean, I'm told that there's a good chance it'll eventually pass.
Yeah, one of the purposes of the land bank as proposed at, at town meeting, what was interesting in, in the vetting process at town meeting, the various interest groups who, who was supposed to, you know, who's, who were advocating for the, the fund, for the, the areas that the fund, the land bank was supposed to help, kind of got into arguments. So, should it be as, like, in Nantucket, I believe, that sole use can be for open space purchases. I think if we were to limit it to just that here, we would be generating a lot of revenue that would go into a, call it a bank, and there wouldn't be a heck of a lot of opportunity to spend it, because we don't have a heck of a lot of open land to, to buy and protect. So, man, I think our needs are a bit broader than just a land bank. There's clearly a need for affordable housing, and I would argue, though this I suspect would be controversial, I, I believe there's, we need to have a, a source of funds to be able to jump on opportunities as, as they arise to purchase land for municipal use. So, you know, if a property near, say, a school campus came on the market and, and was deemed to be a strategic parcel for us, we should be able to use it for that. That's what I think, and I would fight for that. That, that, that I suspect would be a controversial use, getting through town meeting. But, but anyway, I'm talking a lot, and that's, I don't know if I'm saying anything. So, what do we think of the charge here? I thi, I think if you read, reading five, I, I, I actually don't think it would be that difficult, given the fact that we have, we studied the CPA back in, what, two thousand five-ish?
Yeah, two thousand and six.
Five or six. So, we can dust that report off and, and, you know, see if it still makes sense today. And, you know, the committee can come up with a, a two-pronged approach, CPA and land bank, if that's what they want to do. Is March one, March one would put it on track for the spring town meeting. Does that have enough time? This is a narrower kind of...
The March one was in the resolution as well, that target.
And do these bullet, do these bullet points capture the spirit of the resolution?
Yes. With the exception of adding the CPA, because that really came out during the debate.
That came out during the discussion, I think, at town meeting. And I, I, I got the feeling there was a lot of interest in CPA.
There are a lot of people that are associated with town meeting now that weren't here for the discussion, myself included, for the CPA. So, it, it would just be nice to kind of let everyone know what was considered and why things are different.
Yeah, and we should spell preservation right.
My concern, the way this is working, this is, the CPA is an alternative to the land bank. And I just want flexibility to be able to consider...
Okay, propose, tweak the language.
So, could be an alternate or additional means.
Okay, fine. So, we're, how, how big a committee are we looking at? For this one?
Five or six.
Five to seven, I think. Okay, so I think this one is, I don't think we need to do much tweaking of this. Should we just vote it, or want to vote it next, next time?
I'm fine voting it now.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Let's get started.
Is there something that was given, other than like David McQuay or whatever?
Again, this, the language came right from the resolved clause in the resolution. I didn't deviate from that, except for the CPA. That was it.
Okay. And if we need to tweak it, we can always tweak it. Okay, so I'll, I'll vote, I'll, I'll move the land bank study committee charge as written with the amended language from select person Heller, which would, Community Preservation Act can be an alternative or additional means of achieving, blah, blah, blah.
And that it should be a committee composed of five to seven members.
Okay.
Is that what you want? I thought I heard...
It doesn't have to be in the charge.
It doesn't have to be in the charge, but we, we understand what you're trying to.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And share votes aye.
Thank you.
And we're looking for applicants, anybody who's watching who's interested.
Okay, and I think that concludes our business.
I know one of the two. That's pretty...